This meeting of the City of Socorro is set to begin. Gentlemen, please remove your hats and everyone, please silence all electronic equipment. No disruptive behavior or outbursts will be tolerated and violators are subject to ejection and possible prosecution.
La junta del Consilio de la Ciudad de Socorro está por empezar. Caballeros, favor de quitar las cachuchas, sombreros, todos favor de poner en silencio todo equipo electrónico, no se va a tolerar ningún tipo de comportamiento perjudicial o revoltoso. A quien no siga estas reglas, se le sacará y puede ser infraccionado.
It is 6:04 PM, this meeting is called to order. Item number two, pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, establishment of quorum.
Ruben Reyes.
Here.
Cesar Nebaris.
Here.
Alejandro Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Ivy Avalos.
Here.
Rudy Cruz Jr.
Here.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Item number four, public comment.
No speakers, mayor, for public comment.
Moving on to consent agenda, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nebaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos.
Yes.
Moving on to regular agenda, Grants Department, item number six, discussion and action to approve the proposed updates to the spending framework for the city of Socorro's allocation under the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund approved in the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. Do we need a motion to discuss or approve?
Motion to approve discussion, second.
Good afternoon, mayor and council, Alejandro Ladez, City Development Director. We are requesting your approval of the proposed update to the ARPA spending framework. As you recall, the ARPA spending framework was approved by city council on October 28th, 2021. We have been bringing these updates to that framework as projects change, as we review the projects for eligibility and compliance with federal requirements. Today, we are updating the Police Department ARPA projects. Previously, our approved framework included three, I apologize, four Police Department projects. The Police Department has since condensed those four projects into two projects. There is no increase or decrease in the amount for those projects, they have simply been reallocated to two projects. The first project is SPD01. It's for the Socorro Police Department Communications Equipment Project. This project was originally $700,000, however, it was reduced to $480,000. And the second project is SPD03, which is a Socorro Police Department Vehicles Project. That project has been allocated $545,000. Both projects are eligible for ARPA funding, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Motion to approve, second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nebaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos.
Yes.
Mayor and council, item number seven, discussion and action to bring assistance for the basic necessities such as natural gas, water, and wastewater services to all citizens of Socorro, Texas, and El Paso County.
Motion to approve, second.
Mayor and council, first and foremost, before I present the agenda item, I want to thank the organizations, I want to thank the constituents and the residents of Socorro for attending this meeting. We understand that in our city, there's still streets that are unpaved, we understand that there's communities within the City of Socorro who still don't have access to water, don't have access to natural gas and other utilities, which is why we decided that this was the perfect moment to take advantage of this. And again, just for the formality of things, I want everybody to know that this meeting has to be conducted in this manner, but once the presentation is given by our city planner, we're free to move about. We have a map here that's going to be displayed, and I'd also like to suspend the rules to allow for individuals to come up and speak at the podium, but I'll request that we suspend the rules after the presentation is given, for the purpose of being able to listen to your concerns, listen to the areas where you live, because we do have people here from the Texas Gas Service that want to hear your concerns, we also have Lower Valley Water District as well, we have representatives from all the utilities here, so this is the whole purpose and meaning of this meeting here. It's going to take different funding sources. It's a heavy burden on the City of Socorro, we want you all to know this, that we've been in contact from the congressional level, the state level, down to the local level, and everybody seems to be on board, everybody wants to help out the City of Socorro, and I'm very pleased to see the amount of people here today, because it just shows how much need there is here in the City of Socorro. This is only a fraction of the individuals that are going to be potentially impacted by what we're trying to do here. So, at this point, we're going to hand over the mic to our city planner, Mr. Carlos Gallinari.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Mayor and council, good afternoon. Carlos Gallinari with Planning and Zoning, also welcome to all the members of the Socorro residents and the elected officials and the utilities that are here with us tonight. So, what I wanted to do, and recognizing that this is the initial conversation that this body is having in regards to this subject, what I wanted to do is just present a series of maps to start the discussion, and so the next slide will start the presentation. And so with the city manager, recognizing that Mr. Cruz and the city council had asked for the special meeting, the city manager asked us to review any existing maps that we may have, and so we reached out to Texas Gas Service, and they were very generous with their information, we reached out to Lower Valley Water District, and they were very generous with their information, so there were all the different parties and utilities that we reached out to were very generous and willing to work with us, so they provided the information. We then did an overlay map of our own GIS system based on our zoning, based on our streets, based on our subdivisions, and so the series of maps that you will see will present some information in terms of, Mr. Cruz, to your point, identifying areas within the City of Socorro that don't have utilities, and I'll walk you through that in just a second. I do want to caveat, though, that while we did and were provided the information, there may be some discrepancies in some of the data, right? So I don't want to, if somebody comes up here and says, Carlos, you forgot to put my street or my house, please recognize that we did our best to with the information that we had, we feel really confident in presenting the information, but there may be some gaps in the data, that's why we're having the meeting, that's why we're here, that's why we want to hear people's residents' voices and information, so that we could modify that data, get it right, and then identify steps moving forward for how we could fix these things. So the next slide shows, I'll walk you through a series of maps, so the next slide is just the first map that we created, right? So this takes the information, so we, recognizing that the City of Socorro, there are areas that don't have any water, there are areas that don't have any sewer or wastewater, and then we also know that there's areas that don't have any existing gas. So I know that the map may be a little bit difficult to read, we do have the printed larger map that reflects this information, but essentially what you're looking at is, again, the areas that have the blue lines currently don't have any water, and for purposes of information, there, in regards to areas that don't have any water, there are very limited, there's very few areas within the City of Socorro that currently don't have any water. The next line, which has the purple, which you could see, are areas that don't have any wastewater, and those areas start to increase a little bit more, right? Yep, that's right, the purple areas, there's pockets, and I'm going to walk you through each of these different areas. And then the yellow lines are areas that do have gas, and so therefore, if you see areas that don't have a yellow line, it means that they currently don't have gas service. With the only clarification is that you see sort of the north part of the city, that you see that there's no yellow lines, the only clarification is that those are newer subdivisions that already have all the different utilities, because they've been platted or subdivided within the last several years, past 10, 20 years, right? And so where you see areas that have the yellow line, those are areas that currently have gas, but then there's going to be other areas that don't have gas, and again, I'm going to clarify that for you in just a second, as we take a deeper dive into these different areas. So the next slide shows the same information, next slide, next, yep, the same slide, this slide shows the same information, the only thing that we did is we wanted to, again, take a little bit more information, and so we overlaid it with our zoning districts. And so I'll read off the slide, but it says most service areas, most areas lacking services are in the agricultural zoning districts, right? We recognize that Socorro has existed for hundreds of years, and so it makes sense that where you have the areas with the highest concentration of no utilities, it makes sense that these areas have never been platted, right? They're older, more established, and I'll mention the issue of the plating, because it's very important, just a second, but these are older agriculture areas that haven't been developed through subdivision plating. The other item that Mr. Odarte had wanted us to make sure that we included is the approximation of homes, and so this is an approximation based on our count using our GIS data, we believe there's about 300 homes currently without any service, whether it's water, wastewater, or gas. And then, again, not having done a full door-to-door census, we estimated, you know, we took the census data of about 2.7 individuals per household and multiplied that by the 292, and it gives us an estimate of population count of about 876 residents, based on the data that we have. It may be lower, it may be higher, but again, I think as we move forward with this project, we'll be able to more clearly identify these areas and get a true census count of the individuals that are lacking services. And nevertheless, whether it's one, or 10, or 20, it's, we need to make sure that as a city, we are providing service to individuals that currently don't have this. And so then the other, the next slide, I'll go through this quickly, the next slide, please. We just wanted to focus on the areas that have the highest concentration of no utilities or no services, so these are, number one, we're just calling it Socorro Grant, never been platted, still part of the original Socorro Grant area, we have the Melton and Varela subdivisions, we have the Mesa Verde area, and then again, number four has also never been platted, there are areas, there's areas that have been subdivided, but these particular homes are still within the old original Socorro Grant. Next slide, the area one, which again, we're calling the Socorro Grant area, and this is a deeper dive into the map that we've provided, there's about 108 affected homes, or about 36% of all the affected areas, in terms of the number of houses that we're looking at. This area has no sewer or gas, does have water, and is not platted, and I want to spend a little bit of time, mayor and council, on just the issue of plating, right? If you were to develop a new area today in the City of Socorro, say 100 acres of pristine open space, open land, the developer would come in, and they would dedicate the street, and they would dedicate any easements to provide for the utilities. And these areas, because they have been established, and we've all recognized that there are roads that have not been dedicated or have not been recorded as easements, they serve as roads, right? People allow their neighbors to pass through, it becomes a little bit more difficult, not impossible, right, but just a little bit more difficult to start to provide these utilities, because what's going to happen is that when we do get ready to provide whatever utility is missing, the utility companies are going to have to get easements, they're going to, you know, someone still has to give someone the right to enter their property. And so I wanted to highlight that point, because it's an important one, right? There may be areas that, we know that these areas need utilities, but it's not as simple, again, not impossible, but somewhat a little bit difficult, it's not as simple as just saying tomorrow, let's go into your property and start digging a trench for these utilities, right? There's still a lot of paperwork, a lot of processes that need to take place, maybe some subdivision plaits that need to happen, or going door-to-door and asking for individuals to provide an easement onto their properties. And so the next slide just shows an area of this first focus area, just to give you an idea, again, still very sparse agricultural areas. The next slide shows area two, the Melton and Varela, this, the data on this one is it's about 88 homes, or 30% of all the affected homes, 78 currently have no sewer, some of them have gas, and then 12 have no water, no sewer, or no gas. This is the one area that doesn't have any of those different utilities. I do want to, I do want to say, though, that if you all remember, about a month ago, we brought forward to you the permit fee waiver for Lower Valley Water District for the Varela subdivision, so that one is starting to move forward, I believe they're starting construction next week, have already started doing some of the groundwork, so there is some movement on this area in terms of providing some of the utilities. And then again, some properties are platted, and some are still within the Socorro Grant. Next slide, please, and then this just gives you an idea of what those, what that area looks like. The next slide is area three, and so this is what we're calling the Mesa Verde area, again, there's about 56 homes, 12 of them have no sewer or gas, 44 have no sewer, some properties are platted, such as the Mesa Verde subdivision, and then some are still in track form. And the next slide shows the aerial photograph of the region that we just discussed. And then the final area, which again, we're calling the Socorro Grant, has about 33 homes, or 11%, eight currently have no sewer or gas, and then 25 have no sewer, and then some of them have some gas, and then some properties are platted within the, excuse me, actually, that data, the last slide is incorrect, so none of these subdivisions are platted, some are still in track form. And then the next slide shows the aerial. And so finally, I did focus on four areas, there's still some scattered lots, not as concentrated as the four that we discussed, but in general, we recognize, again, that there are several 800 or so families, individuals that don't have any, or some combination of utilities. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know, Mr. Cruz, you wanted to have a discussion, wanted to allow the residents and members of the public that are here with us today to provide us some data, provide us some information, so pending any questions, that completes my presentation.
May I, mayor?
Go ahead.
So, for the sole purpose of this meeting as well, number one, we need to identify the areas that are lacking certain services, because we know that there's certain areas in our city that have water, but they may not have sewer.
Yes, sir.
Some may have one and not the other.
Correct.
What we need the residents' help with is to identify those areas with us, because we, the city doesn't have a database that has this information, again, as you mentioned, our city is a very old one, there's been a lot of streets that have not been dedicated to the city, and have been used as easements for other neighbors. I understand that there may be some residents in the room here who do not have a paved road, that's also something that we're going to need help with, we need those individuals to come forward and help us identify who owns the easement, these may be located in deeds from years ago, because they do not belong to the city, in order for the city to go in there and provide paved roads, it needs to be the city's property, it needs to be the city's, we need to own that easement, in order for us to go in there and pave. At the same time, we ask that you all share this information with other neighbors who you may feel are having the same issues. Tenemos que identificar primero estas áreas que no tienen las utilidades de agua o gas natural, necesitamos la ayuda de ustedes para poder identificar estas áreas, porque nosotros no tenemos una lista de todas estas calles o las casas que están afectadas de esta manera, no tenemos esto en nuestros, en los archivos, no se encuentra, entonces lo que necesitamos es la ayuda de la gente, necesitamos que vengan a la oficina de planning and zoning con el señor Gallinari y su equipo para poder empezar una lista y poder programar el proyecto, este tipo de proyecto no puede comenzar hasta que tengamos esta información, por eso necesitamos la ayuda de ustedes. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge our state representative, Ms. Mary Gonzalez, who's back here, appreciate you for joining us today. At this time, I would like to suspend the rules in order to allow individuals of the committee to come up and speak, and if they'd like to address the council at this time.
May I, just, before we do that, can we ask Mr. Grijalva to update us on some of these projects, they're already in motion? And this way, when the residents come up, they already have that information, if it's part of their subdivision, because there's about five, if I'm not, or a little bit more, already in motion, and two that are being studied by the Lower Valley Water, who have already identified where the services that they need from the Lower Valley Water. Also, Mr. Ito from the gas company, I'm not sure if you have information of the subdivisions that are being looked at for gas as well? So these subdivisions are already either in motion to start, or for these two companies to come in and let us know if it's going to be possible or not, so, if you don't mind.
I'm helping.
We do have our chief of operations and technical officer, our head engineer, Mr. Long, and he's got some of the information, our grants administrator, Michael Flores, has some of our information, and I'll give you the general overview, and he will correct me if I am wrong. Okay, so the first one that you mentioned was Varela Road, yes, we will begin construction next Monday. It's being staked out as we speak, we're moving the equipment and the inventory that we need to get the project going, as of next Monday, we will begin digging on Varela Road. Bejara Estates, we've got an engineering design, we're just waiting for one easement, and it's a big easement, this easement is where the former RCA plant is, our lift station is behind it, so we need to cross Alameda and get that easement from the company now, we're talking to their lawyers, it looks like it's positive, it's just taking time for the lawyers to draw up the documents to give us the easement. Once that happens, we will start construction on Bejara Estates. Okay, now, Bejara Estates does not include the commercial entities on Milton, and from Milton North, okay? They're going to have to come into a development agreement with us to foot the bill for that, because our funding is just for the residents of the area, okay? I call it Silvia, Mesa Verde?
Yes.
Mesa Verde, okay, that was an extraordinary deep line, and what happened is, one of the construction, one of the developers there put in half-acre tracts with septic systems. We are doing the engineering design as we speak, and the easement acquisition where we need to, to be able to put in sewer lines where the septic systems are, okay? And that phase is where, Ed. Okay, so we've got 80% of the engineering design for that particular project, okay? Bovee Road, that's an interesting one, we're looking at one or two residents at a time, and it happens to be brothers and sisters that all live next to each other on old family estates. We can provide the service, we're working with them, the issue here is, is we've had agreements with other entities where immediately after we put infrastructure, they develop and recoup the benefit of our generosity, so we're going to write contracts that say, if you develop based on the infrastructure we provided, you owe us for that infrastructure, okay? That's what we're working up with regard to Bovee. The one on Franklin Drain Area, we're not too familiar with, are we? No, this one's on the border, right? The last one you mentioned, it's right on the border, I think. Mr. Gallinari? Where is that last one?
The focus area number four?
Okay.
Is that the one you're asking about?
Yes.
Yes, sir, so it is towards the...
On the river?
Yeah, towards, yes.
We're thinking it's off of Dendigo Road, or no?
Off of Bovee.
Bovee, we'll have to talk, that one we don't know about.
Okay, Victor, if you want to put up just the presentation, see if...
It's the 13 and 12 houses that, unless it's on Dendigo Road, we have no idea, and we'll talk to you about that, it came as a surprise to us today, we'll put it on our map. And I think that's the status, yes, ma'am?
So, we're still missing Ornsby and Mesa Drain?
Yeah, they're not up here.
No, he just spoke about Mesa Drain.
Oh, they did, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the name, okay.
Well, Ornsby is on schedule, we're working on the easements and Ornsbys, since it's not an official road, so that the residents can tell us we can cross our water and sewer lines through there. That's one of their projects, and I think it's, we're going from Varela to Thompson Road in San Luis Ojo, and then we're coming back to Ornsby, corrected? Okay, so it's probably sometime early next year when we start Ornsby. What was the other one? There's just three residents, they do have water, they got water from across the lateral, there is a lateral easement, I don't know that we can request to put a sewer line along the lateral easement, but we have a developer in the area that's probably going to help us get infrastructure closer to those residents there, and we'll be able to connect them to the sewer from the other side, from...
We're still talking about Ornsby? Or which development are you talking about? I'm sorry.
The one that's coming down from Panorama Village all the way to the drain, that's one of Espoada's developments, what's it called, Ed? All right, you cut us off guard on that one.
I know.
We're using them so that we can connect the... We're, we're using them so that we can connect the Panorama Village collection system downward to our drain on the, is it Mesa Drain? Mesa Drain.
Okay.
And then once that's built, we can cross over the residence to there.
So he's talking about Mesa Drain?
Mesa Drain, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mesa Drain. And then Manso, Manso was one of the ones that we added along with.
Yes. We've got that one in our sights. We're going to add it to our map. That one we do know about. And that's not Manso, isn't the one on the border either? No?
No.
No, so that's another one. All right, you should, you should be able to see them on our map as soon as we get them back on. We talked to our GIS people. They create the shapefile, put it on the map, and then we get an estimate of cost. It's basically an engineering exhibit, not the full engineering design, just an exhibit so that we can see what it's going to cost us, and then we'll try to seek funding for it.
And I just, I'd just like to mention that you can see all these projects that he's mentioning on their website, on the Lower Valley Water District website, and where they're lo, or where they're located and at what phase they're at.
As, as of next week, they'll be updated weekly so that you can know from week to week how we're progressing on these projects.
Thank you.
Let's keep the water up here. Hold on. Mr. Grijalva, now that we have the representatives for the, the organizations up here or the departments, does anyone from the, from the, our residents have any questions? You show, do we have the mic, the, can, can you hand the mic still?
You have to make the motion first, right?
Oh, did we, did we suspend the rules? I'm sorry.
Make the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules. Second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colón Villalobos.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mr. Grijalva, I believe you were speaking about my area. I'm at 10949 Mesa Drain. My name's Margarita Perez. And yes, we used to have our water line on Burt, which was six hundred feet. Now, two years ago, we got permission from Mr. Ruben Reyes from the Water Authority, and they crossed from Supima across. So is that where you want to bring it in? If you can, if we can have sewer. There, there are only three people, but there's one, another individual that's getting ready to build right in the middle, so there'd be four. Where would you be coming from to bring in the sewer?
Okay, what we have to do is an analysis of how deep the collection system manholes are on both sides, on the Burt side and on the side where the lateral is. Whichever one is deepest so that we can go under the lateral and reach you is what we're going to use. The good thing about it is there is a twelve unit development on Burt Road that has been sitting there for a few years. We're going to talk to them. And then Drake Enterprises, the same people that owned the development, own all of that property. So we're going to talk to them what their intentions are, and maybe we can get some sort of an agreement to where they'll pay up half of the cost to get to you guys based on their development.
Okay, so.
We've got some work to do. It just came to our attention, what was it, last month?
Two weeks ago.
But we're, we're working.
Okay, so I could have a little bit of a chance to.
Absolutely.
Yes, I mean, we got, we got water in front of our apartment about two years ago.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to remind you to please speak into the microphone. There are people listening, so they might have the same problem. So please speak into the microphone.
Good afternoon, council members, mayor, everyone else here. Just for sake of disclosure, my name is Rick Avalos. I'm a commissioner on the Ethics Commission here for the City of Socorro and also on the Emergency Service District Number Two for the County of El Paso. So just, you know, for clarification. I live at 11651 Coca Road. We do not have running water. We do not have sewer. We do not have gas, and we do not have a paved road. The members of that neighborhood have been there now for forty-plus years. The people around us have water. The people not, not more than a quarter of a mile to the west of us have water, and the people right across the canal from us all have water now. We have done the neighborhood where we got in signatures for easements. We've gone to the Reclamation Bureau and met with Mr. Chuy Reyes himself, which he has given the okay for you all to put water. All of these documents that you need are currently in the custody of the Lower Valley Water District, which in the last five or six years, we have turned in twice to them. Signatures from everybody. We were working with Blanca Reyes at first, and then my understanding is that she is no longer with the Lower Valley Water District. And then we worked with someone else after that, and anytime we tried to communicate with them thereafter, nothing happened. So I know you are not the Lower Valley Water District. Thank you, the City of Socorro. I truly appreciate what you're doing tonight. But just for your information, just to repeat, we do not have running water. Some of those people have been there for forty-five years now. We don't have sewer. We don't have natural gas, and we don't have a paved road. In fact, the road that we all of us use are private property, so we were told on multiple occasions that we need to maintain those roads ourselves. And we've been blessed enough, some of us there, that do not have heavy machinery, that we have neighbors that do have heavy machinery that have been more than helpful and willing to help us keep those roads maintained and to even help us with other situations that come up. So if you all can help us out, even if it's just drinking water, that would be a blessing because we use well water right now. And unfortunately, that well water is brackish. We can't drink it. We use it to bathe in and wash dishes, but other than that, all the water that we consume is brought in. But it would be a blessing if we could get at least some drinking water in there. So again, it's at 11651 Coca. And again, all the documentation that you need, neighbors, all in that neighborhood have signed documents. The people next to me in the empty property have signed documents. I met with the Reclamation Bureau. They have signed documents. And at least in the last five years, not including prior to that, we've been stalled for whatever reason. It may be for lack of money, it may be for other purposes, but that's where we're at. So thank you for your time. I truly appreciate what you all are doing tonight. Thank you.
And that is something that I think we need to mutually work on Coca Road and figure out what we're going to do.
Hi, my name is Jeff Smith. This is my wife, Maria. We live on Varela Street, right at the end. We've been there over forty years. No road, no water, no sewer, no gas. Anything that's there, we put it in. My really, really one, one question on this. Can you get the water and not get the sewer?
Yes.
Okay, then I got it. Then we're in. We, we've signed all, all the easements. I think everybody there on the street has signed the easements also. My sewer is so far back, I don't know what kind of slope you need to get it to the, to the street or how deep the, the sewer is in the street. That's my only problem with sewer. I have two septic tanks, and it's, and I'm set way, way far back from, from the street. The gas, I have a five hundred gallon propane tank, and I'm happy with it. The water is, is my only thing. I run off well water. I have two wells. And I got filters and water softeners, and yeah, it's real nice, but don't drink it. Right? Okay, so, but yeah, if you can get water without the others and maybe somewhere down the line, other, okay.
Water's coming first as of next week.
Okay.
After next week, we, we're already working the engineering design. We worked the easements to include both water and sewer. We're working the engineering design to include the sewer. Unfortunately, we're out of money. So what we have to do is wait for the money to come in to be able to do the sewer. Regardless of how deep or far, how far back your setback is, we'll either catch you on the development that's going to be west of you or we'll bring you down to Bejara Estates, and that's a very deep line. We're going to be able to go under the Franklin Canal to get there, which means it's deep enough to cover your slope.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we have to wait for the funding for that one, and that one's still a question mark as to how we're going to fund it. There's infrastructure money coming in. We're making friends in some places that have that kind of money. And we'll work on getting the money for it.
Okay, then. That's good. You, you made a friend here. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, council members. Thank you so much for, you know, for helping us out. I have a question, though. Me and my, oh, sorry, my name is Juan Flores. I'm a resident at Varela, Varela Road. We're getting our water next week. Thank you to Lower Valley Water District. My question to, oh, my question to you is, me and my neighbors, we've been coming here for years trying to get services, trying to get street, trying to get gas, water. And the council members always approve of, you know, for the, the City of Socorro to help us out, but we're always hitting roadblocks. And, and everything stops. Like, what happens is that the City of Socorro will try to help us, but we hit a roadblock where one of our neighbors doesn't live with us, live in the area anymore, and they need the ease of access paperwork, and we don't have it. Other roadblocks have been that it's a landlocked, locked, or locked? I forgot what it's called. So we've been hitting many roadblocks. My question to you is, now that, you know, we're having this meeting, how hard would it be for us to be able to get these services? Because he did, Mr. Carlos did mention that there are, you know, stuff that, that we have to consider before all this stuff is being granted. So that's my question to you, is how hard is it going to be for us to get a street? We've got families who are, you know, we got families who are disabled. We got families who are kids, and when it rains or snows, it's just really hard for us. When we had the pandemic, a lot of us didn't even have internet, so it was hard for our kids to go to school. I mean, it's just been horrible. And we really need your help on this one. And we have neighbors here who's been here for about thirty years. And it's just been, it's just been really hard. So that's my question to you. How hard would it be for us to start getting these services?
I believe Mr. Grijalva said that next Monday they would be starting. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. And what we're going to do on the easement is we're going to make sure that it's got an adequate amount of screening and compacted so that they can use it as a better road than what they have now.
A better road, yes.
While I'm talking about the streets, like how hard would it be to get a street?
Oh, paving.
Paving. I'm sorry, paving. So that's, that's the, the budget always, we always, that's the biggest concern we had. We just came from a meeting right now with Mr. Tony Gonzalez. We, I, I said, we need, we need, we need help from the top, from the federal government. Our budget's ten million, eleven million, and that's all we have. So the budget is what really constrains us to pave everything we need to pave. So that's the number one question is, the number one thing we need to ask for is the infrastructure for our community because when they give twenty million to El Paso, when they give twenty million to San Antonio, that's where, that's fine for them, but that would actually help us a lot more. So, you know, talking to him today, hopefully starts a better line of communication. And it starts from, from our congressman down to our local levels and just always asking for more. And that's the infrastructure that we need here in Socorro. And, and I wish I could give everybody roads, and that's the biggest thing we've talked about, is giving infrastructure to people. And, and that's where it comes from because it's just the money we don't have. That makes it difficult. And that's, that, I wish we could give everybody roads, and that makes it very difficult for all of us here on this council because that's the number one thing we hear about is infrastructure. But telling you right now, we're, we talked to Mr. Gonzalez today. He is our, our state senator, no, our congressman actually, for our, our area. And, and starting, it's an election after probably November eighth. If he gets elected or doesn't get elected, we talk to whoever's next and make sure we talk to them because the monies that they should be sharing to us should be a little bit more for our area because our budgets are really tight. And I hate to say it, but it's just, we either get this or we get that because our budgets are so small here in Socorro. But that's the number one thing that we're going to try to do, is talk to Mr. Gonzalez a lot more and hopefully have a dialogue where we can get more money for our areas that don't have roads at all.
Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Cruz?
So I, I think the question was, was geared towards more the, the actual dedication of a street. They have everybody on the street in agreement to dedicate the street to the city, but then you have that one neighbor who they can't get a hold of or can't sign off on the documentation that's needed for the city to move forward. Those are the roadblocks that, that they're speaking about. So I think our city planner might, might have some, some more information on that.
Yes, sir. Mr. Cruz and Mr. Juan, you said, right? You know, so it's, Mr. Cruz is exactly right. So what happens, and without getting too technical, right? So you, because it's, it's a, it's land that has been with the City of Socorro for many, many years. And many generations back, somebody created a road. Andale, pasale, te doy chance, right? And it, it becomes a road, but it's not a dedicated street. And so what happens is that because it's still private property, you are still quote-unquote trespassing. There's a, there's a gentleman's agreement and a family's agreement between all the neighbors to allow access, but it's, the city cannot, cannot technically go into a private property without that owner's permission and do improvements on it, right? Or take it from them in this case. And I take, and I use the word "take it from them" for the purposes of creating the street. So, so what we, I think what we could do is, I'm happy to sit down with you and we could look at the paperwork that you have and maybe identify that parcel that's, all you need is one person to say no, right? If, because it's, it's a, a property that has been landlocked. But I'm happy to sit down with you. I just want to make sure that, that we also set expectations for the council to recognize that it make, there may come a point where the city council is going to have to, one, acquire the property, purchase it, eminent domain it perhaps. But it, it, though, without doing that first, the city cannot expend monies to go in there and pave a street and improve the street. Recognize exactly what you're saying, right? It's a road, Carlos. I drive on it, but when it rains, it gets washed out. So I hope that you please recognize that, but, but I'm happy to sit down with you and maybe we could start the, sort of the first steps to come back to council and say, hey, this is what we found. This is what I think we're going to have to do to be able to get to where we need to be. Second?
Ms. Villalobos?
I'm going to ask Mr. Olarca to help me out on this one. I don't remember the exact numbers. We did, last year, we did, did a report on how, how much it would cost to pave Ornsby, which is not a big street. And it is a top, just to go off with what Mr. Garcia was saying, it, it's, it's, it's a heavy, heavy ticket for a small street. I'm sorry, do you remember how much it was, more or less?
I don't recall the exact number, but it was like one point five million dollars.
For a small street, it had, it has what, like eleven residents, twelve residents? It's, it's, it's a very small street. So, and we have a lot of those streets that are not dedicated. It's a big ticket. It is expensive. And we're just, I'm thinking that's just like the beginning of it. What if we find other stuff that we have to, you know, pay for and we don't have the money to finish it? So I just want you to keep in mind that it is very expensive to pave. And now, because of COVID, whatever, everything went up even more than, than before. But it doesn't mean that we can't, you know, try to start paving some of these streets. And hopefully, our congressman or somebody, you know, up higher will start knocking, we'll start knocking on their doors and see if we can get those funds to come in and start paving those streets. I'm sure we can do that. We can try. We can, and I don't think anyone here is opposed to not trying. All righty. Just wanted to, to get a picture of how much it costs to pave. It's not that we don't want to.
And I just wanted to add that Varela, Ornsby, it is already on our capital improvement program, meaning it's in our five-year long-term goal. So we're trying to go out after grants and anything we can in order to us. And we, you know, we've been talking to Mr. Gajinar to see if, even if we can just do a street overlay for now and then do the side, you know, the sidewalks, the, the curb gutter and all of that after to alleviate the cost. But those are conversations that are taking place and, you know, that, that would be a council decision once we have those numbers. But again, we have, we need all of, everybody's signature to be on board to be able to do that, to go into private property.
Margarita Perez again on Mesa Drain. I was contacted by Mr. Sejera from the Natural Gas Company. And because I'm on a landlocked property, because the, the street that has access to my property belongs to the Water Improvement District but was not given to Socorro, but it was to maintain the road because it's on Socorro Paradise Park. So if you, if you have the park, then there has to be access to it. And the only thing Mr. Reyes asked for from Water Improvement District for Socorro And the only thing Mr. Reyes asked for from Water Improvement District for Socorro to maintain that property so people could access the park. So the, Mr. Sejera from the gas company told me that he couldn't provide gas because of the fact that it was a landlocked property and that it would be too expensive to get right-of-waste. And again, you know, to cross the Mesa Drain. So, you know, if the Lower Valley Water District can cross it, why can't the Natural Gas Company cross it? But, you know, that's, I don't know. I mean, that, that's something that I don't know. But this gentleman right here said that I can go ahead and contact it, contact him again, so maybe. So, but I would like maybe even milling on, on the, on the Mesa Drain so people can access the park. I mean, it's a, I mean, you can do it, because I travel on it every day, but it is not a designated street because it's part of the Water Improvement District. But I really, really thank you a lot for taking the time to hear us out. This was never done. So I really, whoever started this and everybody has put in so much effort onto it. Thank you.
I just want to add that I know that the Lower Valley Water District a couple of years ago weren't able to go in with an easement for the wastewater. And since then, it's changed, correct? Because now you can with just easements. I don't know if it was because of a law change, like through the legislation? Or is it just you had staff that made a little bit of more homework and worry? Because I know that years ago, people used to be told like, no, you can't, because you don't have, we don't have an easement and we can't just go, it has to be city-owned. And now I'm seeing that there's more projects where you're able to go in there without the cities owning.
Okay. No se puede isn't in our vocabulary anymore.
I'm sorry?
No se puede isn't in our vocabulary anymore. We'll find a way, and with the Water Improvement District, we found a way. We cleared the slope, did some reengineering so that it would satisfy their requirement. And then eventually, two years later, we were already working in agreement with you guys. They said yes. So we, we just don't give up. That's the, the difference.
No, and the reason I'm saying is maybe you can share whatever stipulation that you're using with the Texas Gas Service.
Like I said, there's various options with regard to your area. If we can't do it through Drake, we're going to do it through the drain on the other side, Mesa Drain, right? Or we can do it through the Water Improvement District's lateral. But we'll find a way, even if it entails a small lift station for a while, while development sets up in that area. They've already got at least twelve residents, residences approved, I think through you guys, for that first piece of the Drake property. So it's just a matter of time before they do the rest. In the interim, we can provide some sort of a temporary service to make sure that their needs are satisfied.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Ruben Perez. It's in regards to the pavement projects that you guys have in, in mind and pending. We reside at, at a real small part of Effie Jackson. It's approximately five houses. It's a street, maybe three hundred linear feet of street that's not paved. The issue is, to say again, when it rains, it's just a mud flow out there. I understand the cost, like you said, it's, it's very expensive to, to do that stuff. But in reality, this small piece of, of street is not that costly. And we're not asking for sidewalks and curbs. We just, if you can do an overlay and whatever type of asphalt work that you can do, that'll be great for us. As far as right-of-wastes, we just recently thanked you, Mr. Long. We got our sewer line in last year. So all the easements are signed off. There's no boundaries, there's nothing, everything's dedicated to you all. All the neighbors are here right now. We need to sign anything, we'll be more than happy to do it. But we really need a, a piece of pavement right there. Thank you.
Sorry, sir, what's your address again?
My address is 321 Effie Jackson.
Thank you.
If I may add to his comments. They recently did one of our self-help projects where we left the materials and they did all of the work. Kudos to them. They did an excellent job. They now have sewer service because of their effort, not ours. So it's a really good way of doing things and they got things done. We, we thank you for that.
Thank you. Can we get Mr. Ito and Ms. O'Hara up on the mic, please? Hello? Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us.
For the Texas, or Texas Gas. Do we have any questions at the moment?
Mayor, if I can, I'd also like to invite Javi Solis to come up here. He's a project manager for Texas Gas Service who oversees this area.
Yes, ma'am. You have a question? Mr. Cruz?
So the question that I have is for Texas Gas. You, you've heard from some of our residents here that they're, they've been told in the past, and I know administrations have changed and, and the business plan may have changed for Texas Gas as well. Where, where do we need to start as a city? I know that we've provided a map of some sort, and you know, our city planner mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, it may not be correct, concise and, and, and on point at this time. But that's why we've invited the residents here, so that we can provide a, a, a better informative mapping system to provide you all in order to say, okay, we're going to bring it in, but we're coming in through here. There's a main line here. I understand that, but the residents, they have concerns because they've been told in the past it's impossible. So maybe that's something you can help us with? Where, where do we begin? Is, is this a good starting point?
I actually have in my notes as my first bullet point to thank you, because for those residents who don't know, I mean, honestly, we, for those council members that were not in attendance, Mr. Ito and I attended a business breakfast about six weeks ago in which we saw you, we got to have the opportunity to talk with the mayor, and it was literally just a goodwill visit to say, hey, if you all ever need anything from us, please let us know, and here we are. So I think that that's a really good move. Certainly, it has our attention. And to speak to kind of the growth of Socorro and the rest of the valley, you know, there once, as you all know, you've, you live your lives here, the houses were few and far between. We had many fields. I mean, I remember going out here and there was cotton everywhere. And so through the years, as those areas have been filled in, it becomes more financially feasible for the utilities to bring in either electric lines or the gas lines or water lines. And that's where we are now. And our growth, projected growth for this area, not just Socorro, but Clint, Horizon City, this whole area is such that Mr. Ito is new to the company and he is our market development representative. What that means is that Texas Gas Service is now identifying that El Paso's growth is such that we need to have somebody who is specially dedicated to making sure that we're bringing the utilities out to those areas where they don't currently exist. And so that, I think, is a really important message for you all to have as well. We certainly have worked with the nearby areas, Clint, through the pandemic. And, and I really appreciated Representative Cruz, what you said earlier, where you were imploring people to reach out and say, hey, we need to have this and here is my address. Because that's where we saw success in Clint as well. We had an area that was behind the high school that also needed gas. And during the pandemic, we were not able to necessarily go door-to-door, but Commissioner Leon's people were able to do that, get the signatures that we needed, and we were able to bring the gas lines into that area and satisfy those needs. So I think what you are doing here is along that same model. So I think that's very important. I want to go ahead and turn it over to Javi, though. I will tell you, he's from Faben, so if you don't like his answer, you know, you can just like throw something at him. He's, he's like valley-adjacent. But I'm going to go ahead and, I know. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to him, because I think he can satisfy a lot of your questions. So, Javi?
So yes, we do have a lot of subdivisions coming up, especially in this area. Esco Properties, I mean, there's a lot of new subdivisions down North Loop. I'm sure you, you know, you passed by, by the fire department. That's right there. There's another one popping up right there next door. As far as, I do have some questions though for the Lower Valley. For, you said that there was an easement there? There was an easement there? Is that a utility easement or is that a yours? Okay. Is, is there any, any? So it's going to be a utility easement? How wide is that going to be? Okay, because with that, I mean, we can easily go in next to that. That's not a problem. Yes. If it's twenty feet, yeah, we have no problem. So like there and also in Varela Street as well? I believe you have another one, so it's going to be a utility easement as well? Okay, so that helps a lot. Okay, so Mesa Drain, that one, we're still working on it. It, it's, it's hard to cross that, that canal. It, it's very expensive. Okay? So we need to meet economics in order for us to do that. And with three or four houses, it's very, very hard, right? But again, we are have, we do have a lot of subdivisions coming up. And once they do cross, we'll have that subdivision of ninety, a hundred and fifty homes, and we'll be able to cross that drain. So from there, we'll go ahead and extend the main towards whoever doesn't have any gas right now. Okay, so it's, it's, we're slowly getting to that. And, and I believe also, ma'am, you said that you didn't have any gas, but your neighbor has gas? Okay, so on, on that one, it's a simple to call into the gas company, eight-six-six number, and request it. We, we do the services for free. They don't cost anything. If the line is right there in front of your home, we'll take care of it. Okay, and I'll, and if everybody wants to write it down, I'll, I'll give you all the number real quick.
Mr. Javi, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
So these are the areas that Mr. Ito and I have been talking about along with the Lower Valley Water for, you know, to get these gas services. And, and so one of the things that we were talking about is that once they were done, instead of them closing it up, you know, have it, have the trenches there so you guys can come in and, and complete. So I don't know if you can do that coordinate? I know the Lower Valley Water says they're willing to, and I'm probably speaking for them, but they did say that they were willing to cooperate. But the other thing is, the, I know that this neighbor would not have a cost, but how about for these new subdivisions? Would they have a cost to bring it in to their properties?
No, ma'am. No, ser, service lines are free for everybody, as long as we have the infrastructure right there.
Okay.
As far as the same trench, we can't. We, we have different regulations, you know, different companies.
So you have to reopen?
Yes, ma'am. We, we don't have to relocate. It can be, we can be ten feet from them, but we have to have padding around our, our gas line.
Got, got you. I'm just trying to make it feasible for everybody.
Yes. And that's a good point, because with regard to the screening, we can coordinate to put all of it in before we put the screening in and save some money there.
Gentlemen, get together.
Yeah, yes, ma'am. I mean, yeah, and, and again, it's, it, we didn't know there was an easement going in there, you know, around Orsby, Orsby and Varela Street. So, you know, with that, now we can also coordinate. We have a line right there in front of the school next to Orsby Street, you know? So we can easily extend the main line and service all those homes right there. I have cards for everybody. Please call me. It doesn't, it doesn't matter of what, at least I can get you to the right person if need be. If not, if I can't help you. But I don't know if they have any questions for me.
Any gas questions?
They're asking if they can discuss water again.
Okay.
Wish I can.
All right.
You answered our questions, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we will carry this information to the residents that did not come today.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Mayor, City Council, thank you again. So the gentleman from Lower Valley talked about self-help projects. We've asked also to do self-help projects. In fact, a couple of times that we requested, we've said that we would do it ourselves and in both occasions, we were told that we couldn't. So I, I don't want an answer now, because I know this is not the setting, but an explanation would be good to us to find out why we couldn't do self-help projects when we have heavy machinery to do it, we have the manpower to do it, and those of us in the neighborhood, we know how to do work like that as well. So just wanted to make it clear to you all for public information that we are willing to do the work for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Siliana Olguin, Commissioner for El Paso. Thank you for being here. We really appreciate your presence.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Gracias, buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes.
Mi nombre es Elizabeth Azvedo, soy de la calle Orsby. Mi pregunta es para la ciudad. Escuché ahorita que sí posiblemente van a tardar para meternos lo que es la pavimentación de la calle por el cuestión de costos. En esa calle es difícil transitarla. De hecho, entre vecinos y nosotros hemos echado dompes de tierra y todo para medianamente poder pasar decentemente por la calle. Mi pregunta es, en el transcurso, ¿qué tarden en poner la pavimentación? ¿Hay manera de que nos ayuden para restaurar la calle, meter dompes de tierra? No sé. Tengo entendido que cuando trabajan en ciertos proyectos, posiblemente puedan tener el modo de conseguir dompes de tierra que nos ayudaran para que quedara accesible, porque esa calle es prácticamente barro. Si llueve, o sea, es, en un carro es imposible pasar. En una ocasión yo me quedé atascada ahí donde no pude ya salir. Me quedé a media calle. Uno de mis vecinos tuvo que auxiliarme. No sé si, si podamos tener esa ayuda.
¿Cuál es su calle?
It's Orsby.
Orsby.
Bueno, lo que le quiero decir es esto, si se puede esperar hasta termine nosotros con la construcción, parece que vamos a coordinar con la agencia del gas. Entonces les va a tocar las líneas de drenaje, el agua y gas. Entonces, a partir de que terminen, nosotros le vamos a compactar y le vamos a poner una piedra, se llama screening o base. Que es la base que se usa antes de poner el pavimento. Entonces, se lo vamos a dejar ya así y le debe durar algún tiempo. Por el, por medio del distrito del agua.
Ms. Vialos? Sí me gustaría que, que city manager or Mr. Gallinar les explicara por qué no podemos entrar, verdad, cuando no está dedicada la calle completamente a la ciudad, por qué no podemos usar fondos nuestra maquinaria, qué son las reglas del estado de aquí de, de la ciudad, que no nos de, no nos permite. No es que no quiéramos, verdad, pero que no nos permite.
And Mr. Gallinar? Can you also include what we approved last meeting? I think Mr. Cruz brought it, and it was for, for the city to, to look into the, what is it? The non-dedicated streets?
Yes.
Just for, for everybody to know that there's a lot of streets and it was approved for staff to start looking into all the streets.
Yes, sir. So, señora Elizabeth, lo que me dice la, señora Vialos, es que le explique la razón de que, porque técnicamente la ciudad no puede gastar fondos en esas áreas, porque lo que pasa es de que sabemos que es una calle, verdad? Que es un, que es un paso, uno puede pasar. Que, que entre vecinos se arreglaron ustedes mismos el permiso de darle uno al otro, el permiso de, de pasar por su propiedad. Pero lo que pasa es de que las, esas, esa calle o ese camino viene, sigue siendo propiedad privada. Y hay leyes que no le permiten a la ciudad técnicamente de gastar fondos en áreas que no son públicas, verdad? Los fondos técnicamente son para el, para el público, para calles que ya están dedicadas a la ciudad, parques, x, verdad, varias cosas, servicios de la ciudad. So what we have to do is study esas áreas, igual como el señor Juan, de donde, de cómo es la manera de que la ciudad pueda adquirir esas, esas áreas privadas. Lo que se llama, el motivo, la razón más común en la que la ciudad puede hacer eso se llama una subdivisión, o un subdivision plan, que empieza a agarrar x. X, uh, pie, pies para construir una calle. ¿Sí me explico? So, primeramente, tendríamos que ver propiedad por propiedad, si sus, si ustedes, sus vecinos le quieren dar a la ciudad esas áreas, o si las quieren vender, o qué es el, qué es el razó- la, el mo- la, el método de poder transferir esa propiedad. So tendríamos que hacer eso primero, hacer una subdivisión, un plan, dedicar esas áreas, ya que sea oficialmente una calle, y luego ya podría la ciudad poder gastar fondos públicos, que son bien diciendo impuestos, verdad, que, que pertenecen a todos, fondos públicos en mejorar esas calles. Y luego ya podríamos hacer el pavimento, la banqueta, tal vez árboles, street trees, para, para que se vea como una calle completa. ¿Sí me explico? Sí. Y lo que, eh, el señor Reyes comentó es de que hace unos cuantos, cuentas pasadas, nos dirigieron nosotros como personal de la ciudad, que es, empezáramos a ese proceso de investigar áreas en la ciudad de Socorro donde existe esa circunstancia. Y sabemos que existen muchas, verdad. So sí se va a tomar un poquito de tiempo para que nosotros podamos empezar esos, uh, estudios y poder trabajar con ustedes y sus vecinos para empezar poco a poquito a mejorar las calles, que ahorita realmente nos, nos funcionan, verdad. Si les dan el paseo, pero no funciona como calle realmente. That work? Yeah.
Buenas tardes. Mi pregunta es si existen plantas tratadoras de agua en Socorro, y si no, hacia dónde se dirigen las aguas residuales, eh, que las casas y los negocios fomentan.
Estoy a, buenas tardes. Es el mismo problema que teníamos nosotros, que dice ella, en el calle Jackson. El señor Trini López hace veinte años... El señor Trini López hace veinte años nos prometió hacernos un retorno. Donamos el terreno y dijo que ese mismo año iba a trabajar allí. Ya tiene veinte años. Yo he venido varias veces a hablar con personas y dicen, aquí está el plano ya listo y el dinero ya está probado, ya vamos a empezar, pero hace veinte años.
Me puede dar su nombre, por favor?
Mande.
Su nombre, por favor.
Francisco Amesquita. Y luego allí mismo, doné el terreno y mis miras del agua quedaron en el espacio donde dan vuelta todos los camiones. Me han dañado líneas y yo he pagado mucha reparación, que es ella, no, no me pertenece a mí. No sé, he venido aquí y dicen que no, que, que el agua de, y que aquí no, y lo vuelta allá y dicen que allá no.
I mean, Mr. Cruz, I know that this is an area that we had started to research, so I'm happy to follow up with uh, these individuals and start that process, but recognize that it is a process. Uh, I'm not familiar with the, no estoy, uh, yo no ten, yo nunca he estudiado su plan, señor, pero si quiere, en las siguientes semanas me junto con usted y sus vecinos para, para verlo bien, pero sí quería que explicarle que es un proceso, y ya, yo sé que este ya está harto de procesos, verdad, pero que sí, uh, me gustaría juntarse con usted y, y a ver qué es el proceso para empezar esos trámites.
Tenemos el problema de cuando llueve, nuestros carros ya no parecen carros, parecen marranos, porque tanto soquete ahí también, porque es un soquetán. Y, y fui a la, a hablar con un señor de la Jackson y la, la amiga, la ayuda a otro, y dijo, vamos a venir, vamos a venir. Fue y vieron y dijo, ahí venimos, en esta semana. Ya hace dos años y nunca se paró. Y le hablaba, y le hablaba, y me, me dicen que no, que, que está ocupado y que, y no me contesta.
Sí, señor, yo, yo me comprometo a... Ahorita le doy mi, mi información para conectarme con usted. Okay, sí, señor, gracias, claro, para servirlo.
Buenas tardes. Nomás una pregunta. Yo vivo en Coker en Kenstrom. Tengo camino porque yo lo hago. Cada vez, en monso season, se gastan cuatrocientos, quinientos. A veces es dinero que no hay. Okay, for medical reasons or for, por X. Otro problema es those razors. I have to gate my road, because at any time, anyhow, all night long, day or night, they come through there, destroy the road. I go out and, you know, politely tell them, you cannot be doing this, because it's the only way that I can get water, gas, and utilities. They don't care. Nobody cares. Okay? Not too long ago, the inspector called me to remove my gate. And I explained to him, why do I have that gate? Because it's an expensive, it's expensive for me. Dirt is very expensive. Moving dirt, machininging is very expensive. I pay a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Any little piece that I fix, it costs me four, five hundred, up to six hundred dollars in dirt. Here comes the rain. I have to send remove. Here comes the razors destroying the road. Goes to hand, it gets stuck, comes the, the, the gas truck, gets stuck, I have to pull him out, and it's a continuous thing. What is your plan for Coker and Kenstrom, right there in my corner?
Sir, would you state your name?
Pete Murillo.
Murillo?
Murillo.
So on Coker, and for the area he's talking about, part of that belongs to the county. So there has to be some type of agreement that we can work together in order, but I do know that the county sometimes comes out, and, I mean, it's been, and when it flooded way back then, I think they came out and with some machinery to move dirt around. I just don't think it's been touched in years.
I don't want, I, I, I made a way, so that the water, when the water comes down, it goes on the side of the property that nobody can hear. The house has been buried out.
Yes. So the silt that comes down the mountain is almost hitting the electrical lines, right, in that area, cuz there's silt built up for years and years and years.
So what I did, instead of allowing the water, nobody can stop the water, I understand that. It has to have an access. So what I did, instead of coming here and flooding and building up all that, uh, dirt in front of my house, what I did, I made a little canal through the site, and the water goes down to, to the site. But here comes the razors again, and destroying the border, because they think it's a playground. They think I'm doing that for them to play, you know? And like I said, three, four, five o'clock in the morning, these people doesn't sleep, you know? And at, at this time in my life, I don't wanna have these problems, you know? I've been there almost fifty years, you know? But I, I understand the flood, water's gonna come down. There's, there's no way of, no other way. So, uh, later, the inspector called me, said, never mind, just leave your gate, because I have the same problem. I think he leaves right out, across. He said, never mind, just leave the gate there. And that helped me a lot. So what I did, uh, for the insistent people that wants to destroy everybody's property, they go through the little canals that I built for the water to keep the course, instead of dumping on front of my house. So, I just wanna know what's the plan, uh, I, I don't wanna leave. Let's see, I, I've been here with this problem for years, you know? I've been up and down the county, uh, every, road and bridges, everywhere. I got tired of it. Nobody wants to do anything. They don't have money, whatever. I don't have money. If I have money, I have to get out. I got doctor's appointments, I gotta do my things, so I have to pay. Simple as that.
Just real quick, for those of you that are landlocked, uh, please give me a call, so we can verify and see if we can somehow find a way to cross, you know, make easements or something, please.
Just to kinda talk on what Mr. Murillo said, cuz I live down the street from him. Um, the, the county did go out in twenty seventeen, when we had that flooding in our neighborhood that really took us out. So yes, that is correct, the county went out, but it was only cuz there was a, a declaration, an emergency declaration that was made for the county that year. But the county did tell us at the time that this is the city of Socorro, we pay city of Socorro taxes. And since that point, the county has actually fixed the arroyo on Moncada, which I believe is still in the ETJ of Socorro. I understand there was a discussion of ETJs between Clinton and Socorro, which is bordering Athena West. But we are in the city of Socorro, we are, the county of Socorro is not our presiding jurisdiction in terms of roads and everything else, which is why it was explained to us that we couldn't get help when Moncada and the Athena West area did get improvements for their arroyo and everything else. But it is true, the county did come out in twenty seventeen, and they built these, uh, just huge mountains that kept the water from hitting us to the west of us, which would have been, would have swiped, swiped us all. That's what Mr. Murillo was talking about, where the water comes down in front of our road. Um, and it is true about the canams and the razors, and, I mean, they come down sixty, seventy, eighty miles an hour down our road. I have kids, uh, neighbors down the street have kids, there's a lot of elderly people in our neighborhood. It is a dangerous situation. Um, so yes, that is true what he is saying. And I just wanted to, to clarify the county, cuz we have talked to the county, and in fact, that summer when the county came out and helped us with those services, they made it quite clear to us that after the emergency declaration was over, they couldn't come out anymore, cuz we fell under Socorro's jurisdiction. So I just wanted to share the information that was shared with me.
And just for clarification, that before the city incorporated, it was the counties. So we still do have some pockets and properties and some streets that do belong to the county. There's, uh, between entities that we have to go out and either take ownership of them, but if they don't belong to the city of Socorro, we can't go in there, and there are pockets, and I know Kes- Kessen, is it?
Kenstrom.
Ke- Ke- Kenstrom.
Yeah, Kenstrom.
Correct.
Uh, but seven, almost fifteen, seventeen years ago, there was a work in, uh, World Engineering, it was gonna come, it was a study. Never heard of it.
Correct. Yes. So the study was made, however, the Corps of Engineers walked away from it because of the impact, right? It wasn't impact sufficient people in order for them to, um, invest so many, so much money into this neighborhood, right? And that happened maybe like six, seven years ago.
Yeah, it's the same thing that happened, right, because it was happening now, kind of in Florida. A lot of the people, unfortunately, uh, get a warrant, they, they have permission, because they, they think that they want to lose any land, they want to, want to lose any, but they didn't understand, you know? Nobody cared, nobody signed the paper, one or two people, that's it, nothing was done, because they didn't mind them. For them to sign, they have permission. But the more, at the end, they say, no, the people, the, the fight's over, you're wrong. Of course, I mean, the, the, the lawyers wanna take out the fight, you know? I, I said, is the other way around, the third concept, you know, there's no motion of the land, because the, the, the state, that's the end.
No, yes. I, I've been out there, and, uh, a- again, I feel that these meetings are good, right? And we need to come up with a solution. The unfortunate part is there's so many areas throughout the city, so we have to take them step by step. I do know that the county and the city has a great relationship. Right now, we're doing the Sparks Arroyo, there's properties there that the county is willing to, um, dedicate to the city in order for us to be able to get our project done. So we do work together, um, unfortunately, there's so many, so much need, and again, not enough staff to be able to get these projects to fruition. But we do work every day, um, to be able to give you better services, right? I think from this point on is, we need to make sure that we're meeting with the entities, with all entities included, including, and then just kind of follow up on our needs, and making sure that, you know, we, we just don't forget about it, right? Just like the flooding. The flooding happens, everyone's interested, you know, months pass, and then it's like, okay, it goes in the back burner. And then here we are, when the flooding happens again. Here we are again, I mean, and I think that's the most frustrating thing about my position, that you wanna make things happen. Unfortunately, there's so much retape that we need to follow. I mean, I wish I could, you know, do my wand and, and get everybody services. But that's an unrealistic, you know, uh, way of thinking. However, we, we do listen, and I think that, you know, the Lower Valley Water District is really, you know, stepping up and getting the services done, and also improving the, the roadways. Um, but that doesn't mean that we can just kind of sit behind and, and let them take the role. So we need to figure out how we can step up and be able to provide those services that you all have been asking for a year. I mean, I've been here, I'm going on nine years. And I know, I mean, it's since my day one administration changes, and it's like, we're back to square one. Right? Um, I understand your frustration, so.
We know what seven neighbors there, back then, on the Little Street, seven people, we didn't wanna do anything, you know, there was not enough people. Is it they wanna do it with just like wife, me, twenty dogs? You don't care, you don't wanna do anything, you know what? I have a role, because I spent a little bit of money extra that I have, you know, I've been there since thirty-seventh, okay? All is done, by now, I'm over seventy, and I don't know how I'm gonna be able to mess with this. So, I guess I won't take the advice of my kids, get the hell out of there.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to follow up a little bit on the comments that the gentleman made. Um, so stormwater mitigation and controlling, bless you. Um, some of the flooding that we see is a huge priority for the county. These past few years, these past couple of years, we've been incredibly lucky that we've been able to receive almost forty million dollars in grants from the Texas Water Development Board to help with stormwater mitigation. So we're able to repair a lot of these arroyos. So even though some of these areas, um, are located within the city of Socorro, the county is doing whatever we can to try to help some of those, mitigate some of those issues. So hopefully, um, as, uh, these, these grants, like I said, it's only been within the past couple of years. So as these projects and the arroyos get rebuilt and maintained, hopefully we'll see less and less of that flooding. And we're gonna continue applying for those grants, um, because this is, this is a problem that our area has had for generations that we really need to fix. Um, and so, and apart from that, from those efforts of applying for that grant money to help fix some of these issues, we've also in the past year made about a four million dollar investment in equipment, heavy equipment, to help, um, with the sucking up of the water when there are these massive flooding incidents. And so, um, we've purchased, um, vac trucks that we now have located in every single part of the county. Um, and so if there is a, a flooding emergency here in Socorro, of course, the city can always reach out to us, and we'll make sure that we do whatever we can. I mean, that's the whole reason that we purchased this heavy equipment, to be able to help. The, the trucks that we used even just a couple of years ago really weren't equipped to handle some of these flooding emergencies that we saw here in the valley. And so we bought these massive, beautiful, big vac trucks that now really do help clean up when we see these big flooding issues. So please, if here in Socorro, you see you have an incident like that, a flooding incident, please let us know, so that we can do whatever we can to help.
Another thing, it wasn't like this, we picked them, it was nice, it was a live level, live neighborhood, cuz the life there was only one, because everybody needs to have it. And then, we basically developed a, a rising, and then we were getting, I never had this problem, for, it was a nice, it was free. Yeah, absolutely, in the ten minutes, the Socorro, the city of Socorro, every once in a while, the machinery will come in, it really did, nice, okay, from the lake building, um, close thousand of peckers, eight tons of water. We never had this problem, for, since two thousand six, two thousand seven, twelve, seventeen. Every monso season, we raised, you know, for those that still come in, because I know what's gonna happen. I feel, the, the, the reason that I do those things is because of the illegal tanking of barrels of oil out there on the, on the sand, you know? Okay? A little ways from my house. garbage piles of garbage. When the rain comes, I have that garbage, and I have my house. When the rain comes, I have that garbage, it's hard on my house, and I have to clean it, I have to clean it, you know? And the other thing, the human trafficking, they just pulled twenty people, this trailer, across the road. And I could hear at night voices and stuff like that, the dogs were in us. The farther away that I go, and there was covers and water, placed with food and stuff. And the police just pulled from the back house, about forty people, okay? And thirty more from the other house, right across my street, right across the road. So that's the reason I put those things on. So at least I can contain some of that. I put it blocks, these big blocks, a company, what did they do? Well, the big trucks, they chained them up and dumped them, turned them aside, so they can make their way in. These people just don't. They don't care. I mean, I have confronted a lot of people, they throw the bike at me. The bike is the one that has not this people anymore. They don't care, they throw something home, who wants a doctor? They come to eat, they want to go across my gate, I don't, you know, I don't. United States Civil Rights, the Constitution of Rights, this is my company. So they get, well, we get, they come at us and throw something over the bike, because they, 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 they throw it. They throw something over, because they need to go in, into my house, into my property. That's why I have a gate, that's why I put those tanks there, it's better.
Thank you for sharing that, by the way, thank you for sharing. Madam Mayor, distinguished members of Socorro City Council and leaders and citizens, my name is John Lida. I admittedly, I'm not a citizen of Socorro, but I'm honored to be here because in a city that's three hundred and thirty-three years old, you have governmental leaders who still invite the community in to hear for them and let them know that they're actively working and want, at least want to hear to solve the problem. So I commend the city's leaders for that. The gentleman, Mr., I can't see his name, the gentleman mentioned there's an election coming up. I am a candidate for US Congress, but I'm not here to campaign, I'm here to listen to the citizens. I've seen familiar faces and I've already talked to some of the city council and some of the folks here about some of these issues. And exactly right, come November ninth, I may be in a position to immediately help with some of these, and I want to help. It comes in a larger priority of rural development, of across our twenty-nine counties that are in Texas twenty-three, which Socorro is a part of. So I absolutely am honored to be here and to listen to their concerns and to witness a city council and a mayor and city planners and managers who really want to help this and really want to reach out to you for help on how they can help you. In my instance, you know, I definitely want to be a partner, and we've reached out. I travel to all twenty-nine counties and small cities that are even smaller than Socorro. And the first thing I ask the mayors and the judges of those counties is, what are the projects that we can get going? Members of Congress have project funding now, how they can distribute however they want across their district. And for me, and this is how I would approach it, the last will be first. I will come here to where the communities need it the most and see which projects that we can put a huge down payment on that we can take the rest of the way. We still do have an election coming up, but it would be an honor of a lifetime to represent y'all and to help y'all on this matter, and this is to all the city leaders as well. It's an honor to be here with you tonight to hear your concerns, and I hope that we can work, again, continue to work together on this. But thank you again for all that you're doing as leaders and as concerned citizens, what you're doing to stand up. And again, the utilities companies who are working under limited conditions and their limited resources and still doing the best they can, still giving out their personal numbers so you can reach out to them. So I commend the city of Socorro, I commend your city, your beautiful city, the city leaders and your beautiful citizens, and I hope that we can work all together, you know, defend and try to fix these issues. So thank you so much again for everybody who's made it out here and for the leaders again, thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Blanca Rodriguez, y bueno, unos setenta Silvia Dry. Yo no tengo el mismo problema de tanta gente, pero a mí me gustaría saber cuándo van a poner el drenaje allí en la calle de donde vivimos nosotros.
She didn't say so.
Unos setenta Silvia Dry?
Oh, it's, it's. It's the sewer.
Cuando primero nos dimos cuenta que había dos calles de nombre Silvia, creíamos que ya les estaban, estaban haciendo el esfuerzo para darles drenajes de alcantarilla, ¿verdad? Entonces nos dimos cuenta que ustedes eran la otra calle. Empezamos y ya tenemos más o menos el del sesenta a ochenta por ciento del diseño de ingeniería, que es el primer paso que tenemos que tomar. Entonces vamos a sacar una cotización de cuánto nos va a costar el proyecto, y luego vamos a seguir por buscar fondos. Estamos conscientes de lo que está pasando y sí nos estamos viendo en ese lugar.
Ms. Yelobos?
No, you answered my question. I wanted, le quería preguntar a la señora, ¿cuál de las Silvias donde vivían?, pero ya sabes.
The other Silvia.
Mayor, can I address the ATV in the document?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is David Burton, I'm the Chief of Police for the city of Socorro. Just on the ATV issue, so, police department as far as operations, and there's no police department that chases ATVs, just so you know, right? Because that's very dangerous for the person that we're chasing or for the individual that's doing that, so we don't chase. What we try to do is track them back to the residences, we've had some success in that, and then we seize their ATVs when we can do that, all right? So what we need you to do, especially if they're blocking the road, and I know what Coke is like, because I got stuck right in front of your property, so. For us to get vehicles down there, it's difficult, it's not really on our regular patrol just because of the type of terrain that's involved in that. But I would ask you to call us if you've got people that are going over your property, opening your gate, moving your concrete barrier, because that's all trespassing. We do have UTVs that we can deploy, right? It takes us a little while to get it out there, because I've got to have the guys and girls, the officers, change out to the UTV, so we can get out there and go on, you know, rough terrain. But we can, we can deploy that, and like I said, our objective is to follow them back, so then we can pick up their vehicle later on. So please give us a call on that. And all you have to do is contact dispatch. If they're blocking the road with two Jeeps, then yeah, absolutely, we're going to take action on that, so.
There's one more thing. Next to this house, there's Pablo Costa, Pablo Costa has machinery. One night, I was coming, and he had that wash, running to my house, and this was this, a four vehicle stuck on the other side of the hill. So what did they do? They broke into Pablo's house, took there, he said, well, then, his lock pad, use it, take that thing out, broke the lock pad, the shovel, left it there, and they had.
So.
And this house, it was like, I was hurrying. And I saw the guy, he was stuck looking at the phone, like, I don't know, fuck, like, I didn't understand, I don't know. Because it was next to there. But they actually went in his house, they used this equipment, got themselves out, and left it put it on the street. This is getting out of hand, something's going to happen, you know? If I come finding these people, they don't care who they damage. You can chase them, because they go a hundred miles to come by the time I call, they'll be gone. And there's no such thing, no such thing. And I want to tell you what happened to me one day, one day, one year, okay? I called, the police lady, the lady to this side were there. They told me, oh, this is door wrong, this property okay for them to go. And I told the lady, this is a private road, this is a private road. Because the way it was measured and everything, it's all been empty, like.
So we're now going into details about operations that we're doing within the city for trafficking or smuggling or anything else. We've done operations on Coca Road. There's surveillance equipment that's still sitting on Coca Road. I'm not going to tell you where it is, but it is up. And that's because of an ongoing federal investigation that we're involved in. So we're aware, we have done trafficking there before. We have some residences that we've looked at for narcotics there before. We've had some residences, yeah. See, we, ah, okay.
They can't hear.
Huh? I can't hear you. No, you, I.
No, I know, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Oh.
So, just, so I want to just kind of conclude this conversation, but I know that you say if I call, by the time they get there, so why even call? It's important because we can collect all that data. If you don't call, it didn't happen, I can't prove it, I can't ask for resources because we don't have that data available. So even if we don't get out there, we're collecting that information and we're able to kind of justify and do something about it in the future.
Yeah, and then the other thing, is a lot of residents now have Ring cameras or have a technology, please share that with us. We've used that to solve burglaries, robberies, assaults, evading motor vehicle accidents, fatal motor vehicle accidents, we've used that. So if you've got that available and we don't capture on our equipment, then that's what we're going to do, is we're going to come looking for yours. City manager is a hundred percent correct, we use historical data, okay? Historical data shows us what the heat mapping in the city looks like for crime rates. If crime is occurring on your street, we need to know because it plots it on the map. If you don't report it, it doesn't plot it, that's, that's reality.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for me, this is the case.
That's.
Officer, I just want to say, when you guys are out there, you guys are all very courteous and respectful of us. I appreciate that, and here is out, so you know, for the addition, you guys have developed a plan. You know, you've done what you can with it all, so I appreciate it.
All right, one more question before moving on, I believe you had a question, is that correct? Sí, tiene pregunta.
Stiff from sitting down so long. Anyway, my name is Gabriel Cern, I live at eight forty-one Castle Fin. Appreciate you all looking into getting us all these services. One question about signing over the easements. Does that require giving up twenty feet for the road easement?
For the road on a residential, so the answer, Mr. Cern is yes. We, you, whomever, in this case, if it's you or your neighbors, it would require them to deed over the right of way, and it would be for a residential road, it's more than twenty feet, it's about twenty-four feet, just for the pavement. Now, if you want a sidewalk and you want curb and gutter, it's an additional.
And the reason I bring it up is because Castle Fin is a small community, established community, and it's been there forever, and it has, the easements were plotted out but never signed over to the city. And the roads are very thin there, or narrow. And not only are they narrow, but everybody's built all the way down both sides of the easement.
Onto the easement.
Right, so that would be an issue that, I'm just bringing that up.
Correct, so when we go through this process of acquiring property and real estate for the dedication of a street, we look at encroachments, and if there's more land that we can take because we want to make the road functional and bigger, then that's, those are things that we would look at.
Right, okay, that answers one of my questions. The other question I had was, or not even a question, I just wanted to make a statement, that as far as ATVs and razors, they were all over the place there on Castle Fin and Little Corina. I mean, all over. So I called the police, they came down, they did an excellent job. They did track down residents that were doing it, they talked to them, they stopped them from doing it. They did confiscate the ATVs, and that started to quash it. I then met with Lieutenant Ray, and he sent down a bunch of officers, and they patrolled the area for a long time. From there, they went to Coca Road, and they made some narcotics bust on that one, and that's what we needed, and it really quelled the whole area. So I want to congratulate the Chief of Police and Lieutenant Ray and all those officers that went down there, because they did an excellent job.
Thank you very much. I'd like to invite all of you, since we have a limited amount of time, I'd like to invite all of you, if you still have questions, concerns, you can contact any of us, our numbers are on our city website. Do we have any questions or comments from council at this moment?
I should be part of the meeting, and if you haven't signed up with your information, please do so, so we can have your information on file. Si no se han firmado en esta lista, por favor, antes de que se vayan, si se pueden firmar para poder tener su información, siempre que tengamos una junta, mandaremos la información aquí o les vamos a llamar por teléfono.
Okay, Mr. Cruz?
Yeah, I want to make one last comment in closing. I really appreciate the attendance of the people here, because if we can't hear you guys, it's very difficult for us to understand the needs of the people, so I really do appreciate this. If there are neighbors of yours that also need utilities, please let them know, please share the information. We are here to help. This council here has a mission, and it's to help each and every one of these people here that live in our city that don't have the utilities or have concerns, just like the ones that you're seeing today. Estoy muy agradecido de ver a toda la gente de Socorro estar aquí para poder escuchar los problemas de la comunidad. Si hay veces que no necesariamente en cada junta pueden estar aquí para hablar sobre sus problemas o lo que ven en la comunidad, pero con estas juntas espero que podemos tener más juntas muy seguidas así como estas con la comunidad, porque nos ayuda a saber cómo traer el dinero y cómo programar este tipo de proyecto para poder ayudarles a ustedes con calles, utilidades, agua, gas y todo eso. Y muchas gracias.
Ms. Yelobos?
Sí, gracias por venir y gracias al Lower Valley Water County, Ms. Eliana Olín for being here. Gracias a la compañía de gas, Mr. Ito, Ms. O'Hara, I haven't met you yet, but I'm sure I will, and Mr. Javi back there. Anybody else that I'm forgetting, thank you for being our partners, because we need you. Our community needs you, and you can see that we have a great need here for these services, and thank you for partnering up with us. Gracias por venir, por escuchar también, por qué no se pueden hacer unas cosas otras, ¿verdad? No hacemos el concilio del pasado. A veces viene la gente y nos dice, que hace veinte años como usted, hace cinco años, no hacemos ese concilio. Sí estamos buscando otras maneras para darles mejor servicio, ¿verdad? Con los fondos que tenemos, con este, también este fondos que podemos utilizar del Estado, ¿verdad? Para ayudar a la comunidad, pero no hacemos el mismo concilio. Sí estamos trabajando, desgraciadamente, no podemos, como dijo la, Ms. Rodarte, agarrar una varita magi, ma, ma, como dice, magic one? Magic, sí, y este, y hacer, hacer que el proyecto sea más rápido, pero sí lo estamos trabajando. Sí estamos consciente. Yo digo que en cinco años vamos a hacer un diferente, una diferente ciudad con muchos mejores servicios. Gracias.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions, concerns, comments? Okay, do we have a motion to delete items eight through ten?
Motion to delete items eight through ten?
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nebarres?
Yes.
Alejandro García?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn, do we have?
Motion to adjourn? Second.
Second, second.
You can second it? Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nebarres?
Yes.
Alejandro García?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Meeting adjourns at seven fifty-one P.M. Thank you.